Good evening. I will now call this public hearing here in Councilon Chambers for the Southbridge Public Schools Budget to Order on today, Tuesday, May 14th at 7:00 PM. And I will now hand this off to Dr. Villar.
Good evening. Thank you all for your attendance this evening. I'm going to ask Mr. Racine to get started right away. We're going to walk through the budget presentation and hopefully give you some more information about what our projections are for next year. Mr. Racine?
Good evening. My name is Seth Racine. It's a pleasure to be here to present to you the fiscal year 2020 proposed Southbridge Public Schools budget. This is a similar budget presentation that we gave to the Joint Education and Human Services Subcommittee of the Town Council a couple of weeks ago. So at a high level, our budget is built on assuming the governor's net education aid increase. You may have heard a lot about the state budget and chapter 70 funding. We were at a very fortunate time over the last 20 years where we're projected to see a major increase. And so on top of the additional funding in the state net education aid, there's an additional $100,000 in local source revenue in this proposal. Unfortunately, we've also experienced a decline in our non-recurring grants. These are grants that we do not necessarily receive every single year. And so we're expecting a decline of 879,000 for next year. So in order to balance that, we ended up having to reduce about 22 positions. But we've continually prioritized schools over central office. And we were able to afford, using the local source revenue of $100,000, three intervention EAs at ERS. So for tonight's presentation, we're going to review enrollment, revenue, expenses, personnel, and our proposed capital projects. So it's important to first start on looking at the overall enrollment in the Southbridge Public Schools. Since 2001, we've actually experienced a pretty substantial decline that has leveled off recently, going from about 2,689 students in 2001, 2002 school year to approximately 2,000 students the last two years. Using a weighted grade progression analysis and a weighted birth rate progression analysis, we have projected enrollment for the next three years. So in front of you, you will see the actual enrollment for the 2018-19 school year as of October 1 for each grade. And then what we have projected going forward is that it would decline from about 2,000 students to 1,965 next year, and then the following year is declining by approximately 30 to 57 students per year. But those variances occur across different grade levels. It's not just in one grade or the other. What we have presented to you is an all-funds budget, which includes not just the local appropriation, but also grants that we receive. And we categorize our grants that we receive from the federal government, the state government, as well as private funding in two areas. We refer to them as recurring grants. These are entitlement grants that we receive every year, as well as non-recurring grants. This can be one-time or multi-year grants, but that we should not necessarily expect to receive in the long term. So what you see in front of you is three different bar graphs. The FY 2018 budget, FY 2019 in the middle, that's this school year, and FY 2020, the proposal in front of you. We're expecting an increase of 1.5 million in the local appropriation, driven mainly by an increase in state aid of 1.4 million and $100,000 increase in the local source revenue. And then we're seeing a slight decline in recurring grants of about $12,000 and a decline of non-recurring grants of 879,000. This next slide here shows you the variance between, for revenue, in terms of state aid. There are four areas. There's both receipts of state aid that we receive. This is the actual aid we get. And then the state also charges us assessments, which you see down below, for school choice and charter tuition. So what we're showing you in front of you is the last three years, as well as when we look ahead to next year. It's a reminder to everyone that the state is also going through their budget process. So we presented to you in the FY 2020 what the governor proposed. This is the basis for our budget and the town manager's recommendation to the town council. But then you also see what's happening in the FY 2020 budget, the House budget. That's actually an increase of about $193,000 above the governor's proposal. And the Senate weighs and means, just recently introduced their budget, which is about $50,000 higher than the House, though they still need to finalize their recommendation. To make sure you understand the next steps of the state budget process, after the Senate finalizes their budget, it goes to a conference committee between the House and the Senate so they can finalize their budget, which is most likely in June, if not early July. And then the governor will approve the budget soon after that. So this is a huge impact to us, and we'll be hearing a lot more in the coming weeks. It's important to recognize that of our proposed $28.285 million local appropriation, 72% of it is from state aid, which has been pretty consistent over the last few years. As I mentioned to you before, this graph tries to just isolate grant revenue. This is for the last three years, and we are seeing a decline of $879,000 in non-recurring grant revenue. This is associated with the funding we received for Hurricane Maria, an assumption of a local of our after-school program, the OST grant that we're applying for, that we are hopeful that we'll receive again, and then also a private grant, the Health Foundation. So after we receive the revenue, where does our money go? Very similar to basically every other school district, our money goes solely to, almost solely to people, buses, buildings, and out-of-district placements for students with severe disabilities. That's where 91% of our dollars, 91 cents on the dollar, goes to those four areas. And you can see that in front of you here. It's important to note that this percentage would actually be even higher if we included health insurance, which is what the town pays for on their side. So in our budget, we do not include employee health insurance. But we've also done, as it was seen in the last slide, of the amount going to out-of-district tuitions. It's about 8% of our budget. We have made great strides to try to curtail those costs. You may recall, last year, we went in front of you to talk about our expansion for Southbridge Academy, where last summer it was designated a therapeutic day program. This allowed us to bring back and serve in the district, in our schools, a number of students that would have been previously served in out-of-district placements. So what you have in front of you is actually the fact that we save approximately $637,000 this year through this program. The Southbridge Academy cost us about $600,000, which is what you see on your left. And if we had served those students in out-of-district placements, this is about 29 students, their annual cost would have been about $42,000 of just tuition, and that's what makes up the $1.2 million on the right. So when you compare the two, the left is the cost that we spend versus the liability of 1.2 million, we saved $637,000. So credit to the Assistant Superintendent and her staff at Southbridge Academy for doing an excellent job there. At the same time, despite these efforts to try to curtail costs, we have also still seen an increase. And so despite the fact that the numbers of students are going down, the number of students we're seeing being served in more expensive placements has increased. So on our left, you'll see students by location who are served in out-of-district placements for the last three years. The green bar are students served in residential day programs. The yellow is public day programs, and the orange are collaboratives. So you'll see that the numbers of students in residential and day programs has actually increased. We project it to increase for next year, despite the fact that the numbers of students in collaboratives has gone down. And so the cost actually for residential day programs, we are projecting this to grow from about 1.5 million this year to 1.74 million next year. It's a huge driver of the increase of our tuitions that we expect to project for next year at 2.667 million. I would be remiss if I did not mention that Southbridge Academy has served, it's one of four programs being served at Cole Avenue. There are four programs there. This is where central office is located, Southbridge Academy. We rent space to the local Head Start program. And we also have adult education programs there as well. What you'll see in front of you is the cost in FY 17 and FY 18, the actual cost, as well as the rental revenue that we receive for a net cost of approximately $200,000 the last two years to serve there. The rental income went down in FY 17 to 18 because we used to rent space to the YMCA, which no longer rents there. Another major factor that I mentioned in terms of cost is transportation, and we have seen this also increase substantially over the last year. And we actually see a huge driver of that is in homeless transportation. So we have a responsibility to transport students who are homeless, and we've seen that increase, that cost increase by about $300,000 from the current fiscal year 2019 budget to next year. So we're seeing that we originally budgeted this total transportation cost for about 2.76 million, and we're seeing that grow to 3.2 million for next year. These are all costs beyond our control that we're just trying to keep up with. I mentioned to you before that we're receiving about $100,000 of local source revenue, and through this $100,000, we're able to afford three EAs that will be served as interventionists at Eastford Road. You've heard a lot of information over the last year from the superintendent and his team about the data that they look at on a regular basis. And we have here a couple of slides showing the investment here in ERS is being targeted for literacy. And here is some of our literacy assessments from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, and the need for that, the growth at ERS, but also there's still room to grow there. This next slide here is for K-1, K-1 literacy assessment results. Again, the left-hand side is the beginning of the year, and the right-hand side is the middle of the year. And then if we had received additional local source revenue above and beyond the $100,000, this funding would have most likely gone towards additional EA interventionists at West Street and Charlton Street. And so what you have in front of you are our literacy assessment, grade two, grade five results, from the beginning of the year on the left to the middle of the year on the right. And again, you see the intensive support in red that is needed across these different Finally, I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation that in order to balance, we had to reduce our staffing by about 22 FTEs. You'll recall, a year ago, we had to reduce our staff by 36 FTEs. And what you see on the slide in front of you is our FTEs in FY 18, all the way to the left, the original budget in FY 19, what actually ended up happening in FY 19, and then what is proposed all the way to the right. In blue are the school FTEs, and on the top of that, the green are the central FTEs. And you'll see the reductions that we made, the 36 reductions last year. Unfortunately, we had to add back staff for a variety of reasons during the year that we were able to afford due to the funding from Hurricane Maria, that was one time that we mentioned earlier, as well as due to savings associated with staff turnover. This allowed us to be able to bring back more staff at the school level, and we're also able to cut more staff at the central office to be able to do this. But these staff are not affordable annualized when we look ahead to next year. And so in order to stay within the revenue that we're receiving, we had to cut an additional 22 FTEs, 19 from the school, and three from central office. There's also a proposal in front of the town council for $300,000 of capital projects where they're using their free cash to fund it. We wanted to make you aware of what we have proposed, which includes security cameras and key cards for approximately $300,000, $30,000, ceiling, painting, and improving parking lots at our schools for about $39,000, student devices and projectors for $129,000, replacing two trucks from the 1990s. This would be spread out over three years as a lease purchase option for $43,000, and replacing a wheelchair van for $58,000. And with that, I want to thank you for the presentation for the FY 2020 budget.
All right. Is there anyone here, or members of the committee, who'd like to say anything about the presentation or ask Dr. Villar questions? Yes? Mr. Bishop?
Thank you. I've got a few questions. We mentioned the recurring grants leaving. Where are we on the redesign grant? I know that was a substantial grant. Has that gone by the bye?
No, we still have, we have one more year after FY 20, so it goes to FY 21. So next year, we have proposed to increase the school redesign grant from $585,000 this year to $650,000 next year, and there still will be a couple hundred thousand dollars remaining in FY 2021.
Could I ask what we use that for?
We use that for consultants and instructional partners that are coming in to support our work, instructional supplies and curriculum, as well as, yeah, those are the main costs for that.
Thank you. I probably should have directed that to you, Dr. Villar. The other question I have is, you mentioned a substantial increase in homeless transportation. Under the Vinnie McKinney law, who heads that throughout the school district? Who oversees that? I mean, that cost is supposed to be shared by both districts, the housing district and the educational district. I'm wondering if we're getting our fair share from the districts that we're dealing with.
So I guess what I'm hearing you ask is that we have students who move to Southbridge that are transported back to their districts.
Correct.
And that cost, yes, Mrs. Ferriick's office oversees student services and ensures that we are in compliance with the law. It's very onerous, obviously. Some of our students that end up displaced have to be transported long distances, and it's very expensive.
It is. And I, you know, I'm very loud all of a sudden. It is, it's a difficult task, but with the size of the increase, I'm just questioning whether we're reaching out to the districts that should be covering the cost with us, or are we just eating it and not doing due diligence?
Well, I can assure you, we do do diligence on everything that has to do with finance and curriculum and instruction. It's part of the work that makes us all very busy. I'd remind you, last year, we returned two cents to the town of Southbridge. So we're very aware of the importance of our fiscal investments.
So you are in charge of the McKinney-Vento?
Yeah, the impact of the DCF change. So students that are in foster care are now considered homeless, so we're doing a lot of transportation for DCF. So when kids get moved into our district or their families move into our district, we're responsible for the transportation, and that's incurred the increase.
All right. I want to dig into that a little more. My final question is, I'm just, we got this, thank you, ahead of time. I want to thank Dr. Villar for that. One of my concerns in looking at it, and I didn't really dissect it ad nauseam, I noticed we're down to three science teachers at the high school. That's concerning to me. Our science scores have historically been dreadful in science, the MCAT scores, and I'm just concerned that less instructional staff isn't going to really improve those scores. And I'm just curious as to how we went. I mean, when I was a principal, we had six. Roughly, not that many, fewer students were down to three. I'm just wondering how much instruction the students are really receiving, and are we preparing them adequately? From the results of the scores, I would say we're not preparing them adequately. I'm just wondering what fought one into that.
So it's obviously based on projections for courses, and as the students enroll in our courses, we'll have to adjust. You know, our goal is to make sure that every student enrolled in Southbridge High School is able to enroll in a high-performing university if they so choose after school. We're aligning with MasCor graduation requirements. Right now, the estimate is that three FTEs is sufficient. As with, as you were a high school principal, you know, as enrollment comes in and course requests, et cetera, if that changes, then we would have to make changes to FTEs. We are not going to create a circumstance where students can't get courses that they need. But at the moment, that's our best projection. And all of those projections, of course, are subject to change. This is a budget that's trying to make our best projection as to what we need for next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the committee?
Yeah, I just have one. The 2020 full-time educators who aren't coming back, have they been notified yet?
So they're not all classroom teachers that are being eliminated. Some of them are positions that are student support positions, such as we've talked in the past about having our student engagement officers that were added at the high school. So yes, we've made sure, before we went public with any information that impacted people, we're aware of their circumstances. I would also point out that in March, we sent letters of assurances, which is typically done in June in school districts. We sent it out to 80% of our teaching staff because we wanted to try to retain as many teachers as possible moving into next year, and we knew that public discussions about position cuts would create uncertainty among staff, and we could potentially lose individuals because, obviously, their livelihood is very important to them. So I'm hopeful that having notified that large percentage of our staff ahead of time, impacted people have a fair chance to find work, and folks who aren't impacted have the reassurance that they're going to be working for us next year.
Thank you.
Other members? Ms. Shea?
What exactly are support staff?
Support staff? Again, I just mentioned the school engagement officers. So there were seven overall last year across the district at different levels. So that's one category of individuals that would fall into support staff. I believe, Seth, you have definitions earlier in the document?
Correct. On page 10 of your budget document, we've categorized, to let you know, examples of positions in each category. For support staff, these would include parent liaisons, deans, permanent substitutes, school engagement officers, central office support staff, applied behavioral analytics technicians are just a few examples of the positions in this category.
Do you think letting go a permanent sub with the problems that we had this year getting substitutes is a wise choice?
So permanent subs are part of the definition of student support staff, but in fact, we haven't eliminated permanent subs in the buildings that have them because it's a cost that would occur anyway, meaning we're going to hire substitute teachers next year regardless. So it would be, if I were to try to establish a budgetary savings by saying I'm cutting a permanent building sub, it's really akin to financial semantics because I would just be shifting that monies to the substitute line.
I just, I had one question I thought of when I was watching this. Can you just delve more into the capital, the 129K towards student devices? Can you just go in projectives? Can you just go into what's a student device, et cetera?
Sure. In this line item, we are looking at adding a couple of Chromebook carts to a few of our schools, as well as upgrading projectors and the hardware associated with it in our classrooms. Some of these are outdated projectors and equipment, and so this is starting the process of upgrading them.
So the reason I ask is because I know the last couple of years, we've had our Chromebook leases be part of that. So that's going to continue?
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions? Seeing none, I will, we will adjourn the public hearing and move into the school committee I now call this Southbridge School Committee meeting to order at 7:25 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bishop?
Present.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Ms. Peliquin?
Present.
Ms. Ryan?
Present.
Ms. Shea?
Present.
Mr. Thomo?
Present.
By present.
Do not stand in the pledge allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, as we are a public force of justice, one nation of honor, God, made this world a good place for justice for all.
We will now move on to agenda item number three, public input. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the Southbridge School Committee? Please state your name and address for the public record.
Kathy LaFiori, 51 Mark Avenue. I'm not going to give up on this. I'm glad that, after meeting with you, Dr. Villar, that the middle high school honor role and high honor was published. Now I'm just wondering if West Street and Charlton Street will be published also in the paper, maybe?
There's not a plan for that at the moment, but it is something that we're discussing for next year.
It's not going to be?
Not, no, there's not a plan for it this year.
Can I just ask why?
It's the first year where the Aspen Student Information Management System that's being implemented in the district. That's the database that holds all of the information around student information, scores, achievement, attendance, et cetera. So generating the reports necessary for the high school was done, and now they have to create the same material to release that information en masse so we could do it next year for elementary.
So I mean, it has been done, it was taken away. I still think it's ridiculous.
The system has been significantly changed. It's going to take some time.
Yeah. How's that working?
Are there members of the public here tonight who would like to address the school committee? Seeing none, we will move on to agenda item for the discussion of minutes. Any corrections, additions, subtractions? Seeing none, we will now move on to agenda item number 5A, the high school representative report. We do not have our representative here, but I would like to say thank you to Ms. Dillon for her service to this committee, and I wish her the best of luck.
Yeah, if I may add, she was unable to be here this evening because of commitment at the high school, but I do also want to echo the comments and thank her for doing a fabulous job of bringing student insight to this committee. So thank you, Rebecca.
We will now move on to agenda item number 5B, receiver superintendent announcements. Dr. Villar?
Thank you. Obviously, we're working towards the close of this school year. It's amazing that we find ourselves in May, although you may not feel that when you walk outside, grow tired of the rain. But I do want to make sure folks know, June 14th is our scheduled last day of school. I also want to point out, I attended the Chicago production at our high school a few weeks back now and was extremely impressed with the performance. A lot of behind-the-scenes news folks didn't know, or you might recall from the last school committee meeting, that the middle school band director had to step in. It was touch and go for the last couple of weeks, and boy, did the kids nail it. It was a really good presentation. I hope many people enjoyed it as well. I was unable to attend the prom this past Friday, but I am glad to hear that it went very, very well, and our kids once again represented us in a way that we should all be very proud of them. They had fun in a respectful way. Also want to make sure folks know that we have begun to communicate information about the new school calendar for next year, so that is a So that is available on our website. We are also notifying families that on Wednesdays next year, school will be let out one hour early. We think it's important for families to be aware of that now for making childcare plans. The purpose of that is to provide our staff with much-needed staff development and collaboration time. I've shared with this committee in the past that we're at a state now where 50% of our teachers have less than two years' experience. So it's critically important that we provide them with training and support throughout the school year. And so we plan on doing that on Wednesdays. And the final announcement I have this evening is I'd like to thank Ms. Liz Merchant for her service as principal at West Street this year. She shared with me mid-winter her desire to move on because of professional and family concerns. And so tomorrow, I'll be at West Street School introducing Ms. Joanne Wilson, who will be principal of the school for next year. So the staff is being invited to meet with her. And then I'm certain she will also reach out to the community so that she can meet with families and begin to build a relationship. I'm proud to share that Ms. Wilson has spent the last four years as principal here in Massachusetts and has about 25-year career as an educator, spending quite a bit of time in Level 4 schools and successfully turning around Level 4 schools in Springfield. So I'm pleased that she's joining our team. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valar. We will move on to agenda item number six, chairperson's announcements. I only have a couple. First, this will be Ms. Peliquin's last meeting. And I just want to say personally, thank you for all the service you've given to our community. You've made quite an impact, and your love for the Southbridge Public Schools and for Southbridge has duly noted, and I deeply appreciate all that you have done. And I also just want to remind everyone that, oh, I skipped over 5C, excuse me. There will be no meeting in June because of the election, which, how I remember that. So I just want to remind everyone to go out and go vote, regardless of who you vote for or how you vote on the ballot question. Make your voice heard. Local government has the most direct impact on your life. It's important to be heard. And with that, I will conclude my announcements and move on to agenda item number seven, member forum. And I will start on this side tonight. Michelle?
I know that the school committee has no vote on the budget, but I just want to say that I would not vote for this budget. I cannot support a budget that cuts out 14 teachers and 10 additional staff that work with students. We cut out 14 this year, and so then the last two years, it's been 30 teachers. That's an average of more than two teachers per grade level. That's a huge cut in, actual boots on the ground. And so I just want to state that I would not support this budget.
Ms. Peliquin?
Nothing tonight, but thank you for thanking me for my service to the town. That was very nice.
Mr. Thomoe?
Mr. Bishop?
No, thank you. I'm good.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? This meeting is now adjourned.